Okay, good evening, everyone. We'll get this going. Can I have a motion to exit executive session, please?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. We're now in general session. At this time, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and its republic, which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
I didn't even know that.
Oh, these both and that, yeah, okay. We have two modifications on the agenda for tonight. One in the, both in the confidential managerial area, which we'll discuss when we get there. May I have a motion to adjop the agenda with the additional?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Thank you. That brings us to Pride.
Well, first of all, in honor of yesterday, I'd like to thank all of our veterans who were with us and not with us tonight, and thank them for their service. Where's Garrett? I can't see him. Garrett, did you want to go first, or do you want me to go first?
By all means, take it away first.
Really?
Can I just say something about veterans?
Yes.
Since you brought it up. I attended the veterans ceremony at the town hall that was held inside. And my only thought was, and also the fact that it's really nice to appreciate the veterans and what they've done. I think it would be nice if we did it every day instead of just one day of the year, and I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. How about this, Garrett? I'll do one, and then I'll turn it over to you, and then if there's more, we'll take it from there.
Well, just one thing to follow up on what Doug just mentioned. There is a television campaign that has been going on for the last week regarding the veterans. They call it the Green Light for Veterans Program. And that, as I interpreted what they were saying on TV and what they're pushing for, they're looking for a year-round recognition of the veterans by everybody placing a green light somewhere visible on their house to recognize their services throughout the year. And one of the things they pointed out is, once they return to civilian life, it's very difficult to determine who's a veteran and who's not, particularly with the newly returned people. So this seems to be a very good idea, and just, you know, something that maybe the district wants to investigate as a participant of that program.
Thank you.
Okay. Back to you.
Well, I did want to point out that there were 43 local students that earned what they called the coveted DCC Scholarship, a full two-year scholarship to Dutchess County Community College. It's a new scholarship, the David Conklin Scholarship. And we had several, you have to be in the top 10 percent of your class to be eligible and then to go. So congratulations to Alana Costa, Christopher Gabrizowski, Kyle Goodwin, Kayla Miller, Gabrielle Monksweck, Sarah Neshewat, Erica Palmer, and Michaela Pacinski. Thank you. I knew someone would be able to help me. So Garrett will turn it over to you, and then if there's more, we'll add to it.
All right. Okay. So I want to begin with saying, just earlier today, we had a blood drive at FDR in which we collected 67 donations, which I think I'm really excited about. We just put them by our varsity club, which I think that's really great. And the blood center really enjoys coming because we have a better turnout than most other schools. It was so much so that we're going to have another one in the spring, so I encourage everyone to come and participate in that who's able to, so we can get that number up even higher. My goal is 100 for the springtime, which I think is achievable. Furthermore, in athletics, there hasn't been a whole lot that's happened in the last, since the last meeting, since a lot of the fall sports are ending and the winter sports are beginning. However, the cross-country, boys and girls both, won our first-ever Mahal titles and scored better in our sectional title than we, than they ever have in the past. So those are two exciting things. Also, I know our theater production is coming along nicely, and everyone's very excited about that, which will take place on Friday and Saturday. So that's something else I'd encourage everyone to come out and watch. I hear it's very funny, so I'd encourage everyone to really come out. Each year, they get better and better.
Great. And definitely congratulations to the cross-country team for first place. Just two other notables. Emma Reining is going to states for our girls' swimming team in the 100 butterfly relay. And an eighth grader on the cross-country team, Sarah Traynor, also made it to the state competition, so we wish them the best of luck. Tonight, is there any other Pride Board members? With that, I'm going to turn it over to Aviva. This is National School Psychologist Week, and Aviva oversees that department, so I'm going to turn it over to you, Aviva.
First of all, I want to thank our school psychologists for these gifts that are by all of our tables, and they have a short presentation for you, and they're all here, and they're all going to participate. So let me turn it over to the group.
You stand over here, or you have to be in the mic.
Or at least one person at the mic.
Well, as we gave out the little school psych paperwork and pamphlets in an assembly line fashion, we'll do the same thing with the presentation. You have a remote or something to change?
It should be right on the
It's right there. And it's right here.
And Dan, if each of you could also introduce yourself, that would be great.
You will.
Oh, good. I was part of it.
All right. So Aviva had said a short presentation, but we're the psychologists, so we tend to be a little long-winded. But we'll keep it short. Want to thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. This is National School Psychology Awareness Week, and as you can see from the graphic on the slide there, the theme is "Connect the Dots and Thrive." So let us introduce ourselves real quickly.
Susan Morgan, school psychologist at North Park and Netherwood.
I'm Kelly Schluter. I'm a school psychologist at Rock Bar Smith Elementary School.
Cheryl White, school psychologist at Ballard Avenue School.
Jennifer Kemenzer, Havilah Middle School.
Lisa Macklin, school psychologist at Havilah Middle School.
Dan Hurley at FDR.
Ashley Beach, FDR.
So like we said, this week is School Psychology Awareness Week, and the theme is "Connect the Dots and Thrive." The goal is to help connect students to the academic and social-emotional skills they need to promote personal achievement, growth, and resilience, as well as a sense of belonging and well-being.
Good evening. School psychologists work closely with all staff to ensure students are placed in programs that meet their needs and allow them to thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. In recent years, the Hyde Park Central School District's school psychologists have also played an important role in transitioning students to in-district programs from out-of-district placements, for example, BOCs. We're going to talk about some components of that process.
So our first step is to identify the potential students that we're going to return to in-district placements. We work closely with our special education department and the psychologists here to determine who might be a candidate to return. Last year, we had 17 potential candidates, nine of which we were able to determine would benefit from an in-district program. Our second step is to then visit that student in the out-of-district program. We perform classroom observations, speak with their current teachers, and if age-appropriate, we'll speak with the student to see how they feel and what they feel they benefit from
So then our next step is communicating with the families. We reach out, we initiate, we continue conversations that we are going to have with the families or that we have engaged with the families about transitioning their student to an in-district placement. We'll talk about peer relationships, academics, and social-emotional needs, and also any concerns they may have. The next step in the process is developing an individualized program within district. So at the CSE meeting, we are part of that committee, and we are there to discuss, recommend, support, and appropriate in-district program for that student. The program that we would recommend would meet their academic, social, and emotional needs. Then finally, we're up to transitioning to the district placement. We helped to determine the best time for transition. We want it to be a successful transition, and so sometimes it may be mid-year, it may be at the end of the year, or it may be during a natural transition such as middle school to high school.
The next step we do is to determine if the student needs a functional behavior assessment or behavior intervention plan. Functional behavior assessments are utilized for students who have behaviors that impede their learning. And so what we do is we look at to see what environmental factors we can change or alter for that student to help them. For example, if they have difficulty in the hallways, when it's loud, we may transition them to their next class two minutes before the bell rings, such as that. Behavior intervention piece is what motivates the student. It's a contract with them. We look at what they want to work towards and what their behavioral goals are. Next step is we consult with the teachers that are going to have the student coming in. We talk a little bit about their background, but give them their information, what is going to make the transition as smooth as possible for them, and also any related service providers that may be working with the student. And the biggest part is that ongoing communication with families. Many of the students that are placed out of district, their parents are nervous about them coming back if they're doing well in that setting. We really want to have ongoing communication about what issues are coming up, what the student's anxious about. Also, just simple things like, you know, what's the bell schedule and where do we, you know, sign up for after-school activities, such as that.
So the student transitions back, and we continue to monitor their needs. Typically, when students come back from an out-of-district placement, they're provided with a high level of service. But as they transition into our building and become more accustomed with the environment, they often don't need all the services. So we gradually decrease those based on their needs. And then finally, the last dot is transition, if the student's going from one building to the next, or in my case, working at FDR, graduation. We want to ensure that students can exit with the exiting credential, whatever's most appropriate for them. So here's a quick success story. About a year ago, I had gone out to a BOCs placement at Spacken Hill High School. We had a student there who was placed in a 612 program for students with an autism-spectrum disorder. And we had heard that the student had been going out to some regular education classes just for exposure. So I went out and observed the student, and I met with the student, I met with the teacher, I met with the special ed teacher as well as the regular teacher. He was taking a high school geometry class. And what we found was that, well, what we believed was the student was misplaced. And I came back to the district, talked to the special education director about it. We thought he'd be a good candidate to return to district, and we're ready to move forward. I called the parents. I said, "We really believe your son would be served well at FDR. It would be a change in diploma status, because in his placement in BOCs, he was not earning any high school credits." I'd love to say the parents were all excited about it, but they weren't. They were used to his placement. He had done well in that placement, and this represented a risk. So we had a number of conversations. The parents came out to FDR. I walked around with them. We visited some classrooms, met some teachers, talked about what a schedule and program would look like for the student. The CSE meeting came along, and I still wasn't sure how the CSE meeting was going to go. And in the CSE meeting, the parents said they were willing to try it. It was a very emotional CSE meeting. The parents cried. I choked up a little. A lot of tissues were used that day. And that was a year ago, and the student has done remarkably well. He's gone from probably earning a CDUS, exiting credential, to now a Regents diploma.
Oh, my God.
And it's, it really, it's not just that. I mean, obviously, that's important, but he feels at home, you know, in his home district, in his community where he knows some kids, he's riding the bus with his neighbors. And maybe equally as important, the parents have said to me since that this was the best decision they've ever made for him. So he was truly a success story.
So this next slide represents how many students have transitioned back over the last few school years. In the 13-14 school year, we had seven students transition back. In the 14-15 school year, three students. And for this current school year, as of September, we've had nine students transition in. And again, as I said earlier, we had seven, 17 potential candidates, nine of which have returned. And these numbers do not represent any students that have aged out of special education or transferred out of the district. So thank you for letting us share one of our roles, one of our small roles as school psychologists in the Hyde Park Central School District. Do you have any questions? We'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Anyone with questions?
I just, go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to make a comment, something that didn't come out, and that is that whenever there's a crisis or a tragedy, the team that we walk into at the building level always includes the school psychologist. And you are a tremendous asset, not only in your daily jobs and everything that you described there, but when tragedy or crisis happens, you're the backbone. And I've come to totally appreciate and rely on you when we have those crises, whether the little ones or the small, or the big ones. You're there, and your services are off the charts invaluable, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Please, Ed. I want to thank all of you for everything that you do for us every day, and Happy School Psychologist Week. We really appreciate it. And also to thank Heather Dennis, who's our Director of Special Education, who directly supervises the group and has really been behind this extraordinary result that we've been having. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And you gave me important information. I have a degree in psychology, so that means I can talk as much as I want?
Don't get him started.
No, okay, all right. It is true, I do. Okay, moving on to the superintendent's report.
I don't really have any official report, but I would like to just take this opportunity to extend our condolences to the family of Barbara Saul. Barbara Saul was an English teacher for the Hyde Park Central School District for over 30 years. After retiring, she volunteered on, with Meals on Wheels and giving tours at the Wilderstein Estates. So again, 30 years employed by the Hyde Park Central School District in the English Department, and our condolences to her family.
That brings us to Ms. Stewart.
Go Netherwood.
Go Nether. Coming from Salt Point, that's what it says on the sign, by the way.
I see that.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Netherwood Elementary. And, uh-oh, am I going the wrong way?
Mm-hmm.
Yay, okay. So welcome. Obviously, this is a very straightforward
I'm sorry, were you doing your two pieces of pride at the end?
We are going to do them in the midst.
In the midst, okay.
In the midst.
Okay. I just want to make sure I didn't miss it.
Yeah. So we're going to be going with our state testing scores. This is the ELA achievements, and so the percentages represent students achieving three or four, which is obviously considered meeting benchmark, passing, however you want to look at it, but that's a positive. We looked at these scores, the staff together, at our superintendent's conference days in September and the early release days, and looked at the data. And from those, we developed some power standards that I'll share with you later on. So the ELA scores are there. There were some really positives that came out of this. There were also some concerning numbers, which I'm sure you can see for yourself. Math, again, similar scores. And, you know, it's hard to draw longitudinal data because the state tests have changed so much, the cut scores have changed so much. But as I looked at the data from grades three, four, and five, for our kids who've now moved on to Havilah with Mr. Shaw, I saw similar trends with how they were testing out. So if you look longitudinal, they're really, they're making gains, incremental, but they're making gains. There were some drops, however, too. So what's our instructional work look like? And I want to make it clear, by the way, that Debbie did call me earlier and say, "Do you really want that graphic on the right to be cut off and small like that?" It's actually okay. Those are the power standards, and rather than having you read the standards themselves, that's what the staff identified from looking at the state testing data, looking at the item analyses, looking at where students performed, as the areas where we need to focus our attention in school. So through our grade-level meetings and our data teams, we focused on those power standards for our staff. And nothing terribly surprising. In ELA, it's about main idea, supporting evidence, supporting details, and inferential reasoning. For mathematics, it's operations, obviously, and the eyes are gone. So we are working on those as a staff, three, four, five. Each grade level chose its own, but in general, those are the areas that we're focusing on. So in our monthly grade-level meetings, we're talking about those, we're asking teachers to focus on them. When I walk around on observations, I'm seeing those things addressed in lessons. The data team development, that's district-wide work. Here at Netherwood, we're embracing it as well, and that's happening on the early release days. It also happens with some of our grade-level teams just in the course of what they're doing. So they're trying to get together, look at grade-level data, and make determinations about what to do next. And the power standards help guide that. We're very fortunate, again, in the district, to have our consultants working with us. In this building, we're working with Margaret Irving, who's a delightful Australian, and Ava Pacheco, who comes from New York City. And Margaret's working with K-2, Ava's working with 3-5. They've been here, Margaret's been here, I think, three days, Ava maybe one or two, and they're doing in-class coaching. So the teachers are signing up for an hour-long block. They will teach a lesson, the consultant will watch, maybe guide a little bit during the lesson, then they have a few minutes to debrief it afterwards. And I think the staff is really enjoying that work. They're picking up some things, seeing some real changes in some classrooms as a result, some very pleasant changes. So we're grateful for that. We have our faculty study groups that go on lots of professional development sessions on different topics. I just put one up on my learning plan tonight about the upcoming December holidays. The ADL put out a webinar about the December, the December crisis, something along that line, talking about how to really be honoring all the religions and different viewpoints within a public school legally and ethically. So we're doing different investigations like that through our study groups and PDs, workshops, webinars, certainly. One of the nicest pieces of, that we have going in the building, and every building too, and again, thanks to the board for the expense, but was the Chromebook carts and our lab. We've maintained a lab in this building. We have 30 machines set up in one room. And I know my K-2 teachers appreciate it because they don't have to be handing out the Chromebooks and jostling things around. But what we've also done in the last year is we've created a cart for the upper hallway, which is 3-5, and the lower hallway for K-2. And if you were to stand in the hallways during the course of the day, you would see kids coming out, grabbing a Chromebook, going into a room, using it for a while, bringing it back, plugging it back in, and it cycles throughout the day. With 105 Chromebooks in the building, they are constantly being used, every single one. So it really is, and I'm seeing some real great stuff happening. Kids collaborating with their teachers, with peers on writing pieces. For my own little group that I work with, the Student Council, we do all of our secretarial notes on that and other things. So they are a great benefit. Character education is really a key element in this building, and you've heard me talk in the past about our responsive classroom work, and there's a core group of people in this building that really drive that work home. We actually surveyed the staff. Well, over two-thirds of our staff have actually been formally trained in a responsive classroom, and that's just a great approach that really, really works. Dove-tailing with that, Peaceful Playground, which came from Lori Quilty, our phys ed teacher, that's training our monitors and our kids about really how to be independent out in the playground, resolving their own issues. Second step, working with Mertie McLean, we wrote a grant, and we got kits donated for every single classroom, K-5, of this great program that's anti-bullying prevention, with Aviva Kafka supporting that, too. And it's been great. Some teachers are doing it as a regular part, some teachers do little bits and pieces. And Mertie McLean goes in some classes and teaches those lessons at will. And it's had a really good positive payoff. With all these elements, it really does come down to just the common language that we're using with kids. And you can see pieces of that on the wall. If you see the Netherwood cafeteria cares, the hallway cares, the playground cares, that's language our kids created, and our kids created the photographs and created those character posters that we use throughout the building. If you go out in the main lobby, you'll see a friendship garden. That's where kids can post positive things they're seeing around the building, positive actions. That's been in place through Mertie for the last two years, the Carers posters I mentioned. We have Classroom Buddies. Almost all of our classrooms pair up with another room, and those kids develop relationships and do activities throughout the year. One of the really cool ones that's going on right now is our kindergartens got together, our two general education kindergartens with Teal Benedict and Patty Ackley, and our self-contained kindergarten with Catherine Pitcher. And they are doing combined lessons every once in a while with all the kids together, and then shuffling the kids up. So it's a great way to involve everybody in one gigantic group with lots of great teaching. So the Classroom Buddies are taking on all sorts of great things. Bus Buddies is over. That was our fifth graders walking the kindergartners out to the buses every day just to make sure they get on the right bus. With, these fifth graders were actually teaching the kids how to recognize their bus number. And it's really adorable to watch over the course of two months how that happens. Our kindergartners are now finding their buses independently, which is nice. Again, the integrations of the 812 classes into specials is very new this year, and we just jumped on the bandwagon. What that means is our 812 classes go to art, library, music, and generally PE with their peers. Some kiddos have adapted PE on their IEPs, so they go to a separate one. But across the board, all three 812 classes are going to specials with their gen ed peers. And, you know, it's got some bumps, it's got some issues here and there, but largely, it's been a good experience for the kids and even for the staff. We're all kind of growing with it. And we've gotten a lot of support from Heather Dennis and Gina Regioni and Aviva and other people to make this work as best it can, so. Fifth-grade student groups, this is, this was just happening for a number of years where the fifth-grade teachers were having, "Well, let's do We Deliver Mail, let's do this, let's do that." We actually formalized it two years ago, last year, and we each are taking a different group. I've got the student ambassadors, student council, and every fifth grader's involved in one of those, if not more. One of the neat aspects of this building that I really like is the yearbook. We had a dynamic parent, Lauren Amato, about three years ago say, "Why don't we have kids do the yearbook? Our yearbook is entirely done by the kids," and it happens again this year. And again, every kid in the fifth grade is involved in one of those activities, if not more. And the last piece that we're doing with character education, you may have learned that the admins took a five-day sanctuary training with Beatrice V. Days, and I thought it was really dove-tailed beautifully with the other pieces that are up there. And recognizing that Netherwood's population is just really, there's some kids out there who are struggling with some pretty big issues. So looking at that, I invited Beatrice to come and work with our staff, and every month, she comes in for a faculty meeting, and we get one hour with her. And we're processing all sorts of really tough stuff. In the end, it's coming down to how we work with kids and how we work with each other, and just trying to make the school a better place for everybody. And so a lot, a lot is happening. Parent and community collaboration. It may not seem like much, but that little picture on the left is very significant. For 50-some years, this building has been here on a very interesting road. For those who've been around long enough, the driveway used to come in and exit the top of the hill, and then the county closed the top of the hill because it was dangerous. And if you stand out there on any given day, particularly a snowy day, you might hear tires screeching as someone comes flying over the hill and comes up behind a bus, and then they end up in Jane Sterling's yard. She owns the house right across the school, which is, incidentally, the former Netherwood one-room schoolhouse. So Jane's child is now in fifth grade, but in the time we've gotten to know each other over the years, we were both expressing concern about this, and we finally said, "Let's do something about it." And largely through Jane, lots of letters, lots of emails. Lisa Foster, one of our TAs, put us in touch with a guy named Ron Hicks at the Dutchess County, who had nothing to do with roads, but the man just took off with it. And after literally months and hours and lots of lobbying, it may not seem like a significant thing to you, but to us, it's huge. We now have flashing lights at either end of the property that warn people that this is actually a school, and it'd be nice if you slowed down a little bit. Now, I'm not sure if we're actually seeing a change yet. We were hoping for a We were hoping for a speed limit reduction, too, and knowing Jane, we're not going to stop. So we're going to continue working. But I would really like to recognize Jane Sterling for all of her work on that, and I believe we have a certificate for you. So would you mind coming on up?
And then the sign is very noticeable, and, uh,
Yeah.
it really, I think it's going to make a tremendous difference. Thank you so much.
Oh, no, my pleasure. We're not done yet.
We're not done yet. Told you. Yeah.
No shortage of certificates for good work.
Speaking of which, it agrees, and I can't thank you enough because, you know, we just bounce things off each other, and we say, "Who's going to grasp them now?" Send the next email. And as he said, dozens of emails and phone calls and meetings and things, and it's, it's a great step.
Great first step.
So, I'll take it. Yeah, right? Well, we do.
Well, we got all the way up to the State Assembly with this. It was amazing how far it went, so.
Right, even though our speed limit petition was rejected.
Yeah. We're not done yet.
We're not done yet.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
That was very noticeable.
Our parent teacher association, of course, is a vital part of our community. We always have a good percentage of our staff that join, we have a great percentage of parents that join, and they do so much for this building, it's staggering. Much of what we do, we couldn't do without them, particularly the next piece, the arts and education. It's largely through PTA funding, we're able to pull off some really great things. So history and wheels is a district-wide thing this year, but we'll have that again. The Cotspahn Dance Residency, for years, we've had different dance troops come in, flamenco dancing, modern dance, ballet, you name it, and they work with our third graders, and the third graders create original dance pieces. This year, our second and third graders actually went to the Cotspahn and watched a group called Project Forty-four work on their newest piece. In the spring, they'll come back and work with the third graders. So it's a phenomenal show when the kids perform onstage with these original dances they create. We're also doing, and I'm thrilled about this, being an old English major, a Shakespearean residency with our fourth and fifth graders. We have a group called Shakespearean that's going to come in, teach our kids about Shakespeare Theater, and do scene studies with them. So every one of our fourth and fifth graders will be onstage reciting something. I asked for the comedies, we'll see what we get. Tragedies are always more fun, but that's going to be happening very soon in December. Some big building events, the STEM Fair, that would, we used to know that as science fair, we've now called it STEM Fair, because what we've done to my fifth grade teachers, Karine Clerken, Anna Gnafo, Tanya Gambino, is our fifth graders lead the science projects, and our younger guys come in and learn about science through hands-on projects. And it's been very exciting to watch. And then the evening science fair is really the same thing. The fifth graders come back and show the parents and work them through these projects. Uh, we still do have some sci, traditional science fair projects, but I got to tell you, the whole building is really gravitating towards this now. It's, it's engaging, it's fun, it's lively, it's educational. We're really enjoying that.
If I could just introduce that I have been pushing for STEAM.
Yes.
There's the arts in, it's, it's become a big deal in the United States these days. And perhaps one year in the future, somewhere in the future, this will be a STEAM fair, where the artistic value of, uh,
Yeah.
of science and technology, math, those kinds of things.
And I'm glad you brought that up, because at our admin meeting last Thursday, somebody brought that up, that we need to put the letter A in there someplace.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, it's interesting, because there's certainly an opportunity for that. Our PTA sponsors a reflections contest every year that's based on a theme. That reception's happening in December very soon, but it's a great, uh, we have sixty entries for that from this building, which is a phenomenal showing. And it really is kids creating original works of art. What's interesting is it used to be all pictures and stories. We now have about half of those are electronic submissions, dance, musical composition, video submissions. So technology is certainly taking hold with the kids, and we should honor that. And I think it'd be great to add the A in there. But I kept it STEM for this.
Okay.
Our academic fair, spaghetti supper in March, that's just, it's pasta and fun. Um, and again, our kids do their, their STEAM presentations, uh, as well as having some pasta. We have German dancers come in, Irish dancers. It's just a great family night that goes on. And that's, um, a lot of that's a big, uh, it's the staff does all the cooking and all the, the serving and all the food, and the fifth grade teachers help with the STEAM piece. It's a great community night. Our fitness days, if you were to come here in, I would say, April, there's a blur that's going on upstairs. It's Lori Quilty, our phys ed teacher, running around, just doing everything. Um, so the kids, K-5, get to work with different professionals from the athletic communities about fitness, about nutrition, CPR, and it's a, a great bunch of activities for the kids and a real learning experience. She has bike safety going on, there's a number of different stations going on. If you ever want to see that person at their finest, come and see us in, uh, I think it's like May or June usually. Uh, it's phenomenal. And then our June ice cream socials, our big end-of-the-year event with the PTA, and that's just been a lot of fun over the years. And you're all invited, and I think it's the second-to-last weekend. And thank you. From Netherwood. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to.
Anybody?
Oh, and yes, there is, thank you, Debbie, because I would have remembered as soon as I sat down. There is one more big notice that we had, and it's on the agenda for tonight as well, and that is, at district office, Lori Benton has moved on to wonderful New Horizons, and that was, created a vacancy. And, uh, we're losing somebody from this building to fill that vacancy, but it's a really great move for her. We're saddened by it at Netherwood, but Lucille Wazalowsky, after at least fifteen years here in the building, and really twelve years as my right-hand person who really kept me out of trouble more times than I care to admit, Lucille's going to be moving over to district office starting Monday. So tomorrow is her last day. Um, I, I can't tell you what she's meant to my work and my ability to do this job, but Lucille, could you come on up? I know you hate this. And she really does hate this stuff, which means I'm going to get the silent treatment in the morning.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very sweet.
Welcome to our world.
Thank you. Oh, my goodness.
Hanging up in your office.
I'd be happy to.
This is like old times.
I know, we're back to where we started. I know. Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Don't be late tomorrow.
I can't wait to work with you, Lucille. It's going to be great. I'll get you into lots of trouble.
Yeah. So we're going to miss Lucille, but Netherwood will continue on. We'll see you here next year. In the meantime, come and visit us. There's a lot of great stuff happening. I invite you to visit our classrooms, our kids. It's, it's a great place to be. So thank you very much.
Thanks very much. Okay, that brings us to public participation. May I have a motion to enter public participation, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. We are now in public participation. If anybody would like to rush to the podium and be first?
Put me in front of five thousand students, I know I get nervous. Ten adults, I get nervous. Oh. Okay.
Got good backup, though.
Pardon me?
You have good backup.
My posse. Yeah, my girls. So hello, good evening. My name is Kathryn Oakley. I'm a teacher at FDR, and I'm also the junior class advisor. Um, every year, classes have fund raisers and host events to raise funds. The bulk of the funds are used for expenses during senior year. These expenses include a generous donation to both the yearbook and scholarship fund, which is approximately a thousand dollars each. Funds are also used to offset the cost of the senior prom and senior week activities to make them affordable for everyone. The senior class also hosts a senior barbecue and bonfire, as well as the senior breakfast. And during the past few years, every senior has been given a class T-shirt for free, and we are hoping to continue that tradition as well. So as you can see, the senior class needs a lot of money to cover all of the expenses. The senior class has been running the football concessions since the juniors started the high school. The juniors have always been under the impression they would continue running football concessions during their senior year as well. We were recently informed that a change was made, and the senior class would not be running all of the football concessions next year and would only be, um, doing the homecoming game. And this concerns the students from the class of 2017 because they were counting on all of the funds generated from the football concessions. It's a huge opportunity to raise funds, and revenues from the football concessions have been a huge part of the senior fund's, um, bank balance, basically. And our concern is that we found out this late, so we didn't have any way to generate funds to cover the anticipated money that is usually earned, which is between, uh, three and six thousand dollars each year from football concessions. So finding out this late, months before the start of their senior year, it feels incredibly unfair. And finding out now makes it extremely difficult for the students to generate those additional funds from other sources. I appreciate the opportunity to be a part of the upcoming discussion regarding the mam of the Oval Office concession stand. The juniors, however, are very hopeful that with the scheduling of how it's going to be managed next year, that they will at least be able to get back the football concessions next year, um, so that they can have that money to count on for all of the, the multitude of senior class expenses. Um, and having the opportunity to generate the funds from football concessions as, as they've planned all along would be greatly appreciated. So I have my, some of my officers here to speak as well. Thank you.
Introduce yourselves.
Hello, my name's Izzy Palacios, and I'm the junior class president. Um, as Ms. Oakley said, we were recently informed that we would no longer have all of the football concessions, and it is something that concerns me not only as the class president, but as a student in the class, because since the start of high school freshman year, we kind of counted on having football concessions our senior year. We were looking forward to doing that. And not being able to do that now is hard, because as Ms. Oakley said, we did not anticipate this, so therefore, we did not do enough fundraising to build the money that we were missing out on senior year. There's, at this point, there's not enough fundraisers that we can do to get that money back, and it's something that I consider to be unfair for our class as it was, we weren't notified of it earlier. And senior year is not just senior prom. It's a lot of things that go into being seniors and graduating, and that's, should be taken in account, because there's a lot of money that we, as a senior class, have to give out. And not having money in our account as a senior class will definitely put a strain on what we can do and where we can go. And I think that's something that affects not just class officers or class advisors, it affects the whole class in general. They lose out on trips, and they lose out on a lot of the things we should be doing as seniors. And it's something that I hope that can be rethought and maybe reconsidered in a way to help us out more. So I'll pass it on to the other class advisors.
Um, we just came for support.
Introduce yourselves, though.
Uh, yes.
I'm Abby Lambert. I'm the class of, well, 2017 vice president.
And I'm Megan Marshall. I'm the PTSA rep for the class of 2017. Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Liam Woods, and I'm a freshman at Roosevelt High School. I'm here tonight with my schoolmate, Griffin Pelish, to ask the board to consider approving a ski and snowboard club for our high school. Together, we have gathered one hundred ninety-seven signatures of FDR students who are interested in becoming members of a ski and board club. We also have inquired about any faculty members that may be interested in advising the FDR Ski and Snowboard Club, and found that Mrs. Morris would be willing to do so. Griffin and I, along with one hundred ninety-five other students, would like the board to consider approving this club, as it offers students the opportunity to represent our high school in a positive manner in and outside of our community. We students realize that there's a level of behavioral expectations that must be met in order to be afforded the privilege of being a member of any club at FDR. Having a ski club will allow students of varying abilities the opportunity to hit the slopes at a more affordable price, as groups are offered greatly reduced ticket prices. The Ski and Snowboard Club also gives members the opportunity to give themselves a gift of health, as the choice would be made to be outside participating in a sport all day, as opposed to sitting inside during the cold months of the winter season. All the students who are interested in participating in a Ski and Snowboard Club appreciate the board taking their time, or taking the time to consider our request. Thank you and have a good night. Would you like the petition? Signatures?
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the board? May I have a motion to exit public participation, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Any comments? I guess I'll start. As far as the concession stand, we're having a meeting. I think we need to wait to see what comes out of that, in my opinion. The ski club has been in the penalty box for long enough, I think, and, uh, I think, uh, and it was put there, rightly so. Uh, and you said the right words. So I think, I think we can work something out on that. It just depends on everybody else has to say, but that's my take on it.
Couple of things. Go ahead, Garrett.
Um, first, I'd like to address the issue of the concession stand, and I, I wholeheartedly agree with the class of 2017 in that the decision being made this year to come, and the ramifications of the decision to come down next year, I see is very unfair. And regardless of what decisions made on who rightfully should get the football concession stands in the future, we can talk about it in depth, and I agree that conversation should be had, but that football concession stand was this whole time, and expectations should go to the seniors, and I believe that it should remain in their hands, at least for this following year. And then whatever classes or clubs get it in the future, should, I think, deserves a in-depth discussion, but as far as next year, I think it should remain in the class of 2017's hand. And then to address you, um, the ski club, I'd like to say I'd make one hundred ninety-six people on the petition that I fully agree that, I'm not sure if you two ever had the opportunity to participate in Haviland's, um, ski club. I did have that privilege for three years, and I can say that everyone on it, it was the highlight of their, um, of their years when they got to participate in the ski club. And I know Mrs. Holton as well, I've actually talked to her about this, who was formerly the Haviland and, um, ski club advisor, and that she would be more than willing to be a supplementary advisor to Mrs. Morris as well, if this in fact does move forward, which I believe we could have several coach buses every single, oh, um, Saturday, going to different mountains, and I think it'd be the most popular, or, um, activity in FDR. And I know a big mission of ours at the high school is getting kids more involved with the school and getting kids more engaged, and that has widespread benefits across the board. So by having a club that a lot of kids really, really look forward to makes big impacts outside of just kids being able to ski and snowboard.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Very well said.
I did want to just mention that, um, the ski club, uh, you slipped in that snowboard thing on me. This, well, the paper that I had said ski club, but, uh, yeah, I know, they're both on the, on the mountain. And I just did want to acknowledge that in advance of tonight's meeting, I did receive a proposal, and I think it was really well-written, well-thought-out. Um, a couple of years ago, when we had budget crunches, we did cut the, uh, ski team. Uh, we've been analyzing what our offerings are each year, and I can tell you, each year, the kids come back and say, "We want the ski club, we want the ski club, we want the come back and say, "We want the ski club, we want the ski club, we want the ski club." So, you know, I think we'll look to the board for their direction on that. I do want to thank you for the way that you've pieced this together, and actually supported it with student signatures. It demonstrates a coordinated effort and some real thought put into it. The proposal that I have talks about the structure, the organization, officers of the club, number of trips, and so I just wanted to acknowledge that I'm in receipt of that, and you did a marvelous job at the podium. As for the concession stand, that was a factor that we took into account of the junior class, so there was a high level of sensitivity to the current junior class, and I'm sure we can revisit that. We did look at the finances, and when we, in the original thinking, we took the amount of money that the concession stand made at homecoming, and then generally, we only have two other home football games, and the thinking at the time was that there might have been enough lead time, but we're clearly hearing that that wasn't enough lead time for the current junior class. We estimated that there may be a way, if you had this year and next year, to make up for the couple hundred dollars, that that might be a possibility, but I'm hearing it's not, and it will definitely be taken under consideration.
Any other comments? Okay.
And again, well-spoken to the junior class president, thank you.
That brings us to the district leader team update. Perry is not with us tonight because he's sick, and I was at another meeting on that, so you want to, you have any words?
We had a very productive meeting, I know Cora and Aviva were there, we split up into our groups, we have some people in the audience who are with us. We split up into our groups, we had homework assignments. The next meeting is next Tuesday, and that is, each group had a data dive, I forget what some of the groups were, there was a curriculum and instruction, assessment, goal-setting, I had external factors, and so each of the groups on the district leadership team got a project to do a deep data dive, and then next Tuesday is a check-in with the teams. Each team only had to select one team member to come back and share, everybody's invited if they wanted to come, but each group needed to send a representative to share. So, next Tuesday, we'll be looking at all the data collected from all of the groups, and have an opportunity to share that data amongst ourselves, and then also to say, what are we missing, what are the gaps we need to fill in, and then that'll carry us into our December meeting. So it's, it's been a good experience, and people are rolling up their sleeves and doing their deep data dives, as we're calling them.
I'd kind of like to chime in on the district leadership team. It's probably the first time in the district that I've seen that we have such buy-in, we have parents, we have teachers, the union administrators, and students. And this has been by far one of the best we have to have shared decision-making within the district. So this is a chance for parents to be active and a voice given, students are now being brought in, the teachers, and we're looking forward to do a long, five-year goal-setting. And this is probably the best that we have in the district, as this, for the DLT, we have in a long, long time.
Thank you. Thank you. That brings us to review of the draft budget calendar and parameters. Isn't that something Linda's doing?
I guess Debbie and Linda. Mr. Woods, can I get your first name there, before you leave?
Liam.
Liam? I know, you probably thought I was talking to your dad, right? Yeah, okay, thank you, Liam, I'll be in touch.
Okay, on this item, primarily, the budget calendar is very similar to last year's and what we proposed earlier, however, there's one change due to a requirement for a seven-day, have seven days between the meeting and the actual budget, so.
So the budget development calendar basically follows the laws that we must adhere to on when certain things must occur for the budget vote. The only thing that would be different this year is the number of days our board meeting is held prior to the vote. Last year, the board asked that the budget hearing be held the same day as a board meeting, rather than on a separate, a separate date. And in trying to follow that, we would basically need to move our May 12th board meeting to Tuesday, May 10th. We were going to look at having the budget hearing, the, on the May 12th board date, however, that board meeting falls five days prior to the budget vote, rather than the required seven to 14.
Okay, everybody got that? Procedural. Okay. Right, yeah, we're good. All right, let's move to the consent agenda, may I have a motion for the consent agenda with the addition in the confidential managerial section with the appointment to approve the probationary appointment of Christopher Platania, I hope, is that right, close enough, to the position of treasurer effective December 1st, 2015, at an annual pro-rated salary of $70,000. He will be the managerial unit and places Linda Steinberg, who was promoted to the position of school business manager. May I have a motion, please?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
We're voting on what now, the whole?
Yeah, the whole thing.
So, we really should go through the other part of it, too, because for full disclosure, since, you know, the, not only the appointment of the treasurer, but, because these copies weren't made available to the audience, were they?
Yeah, but that comes, that's 10.5.
Oh, did, yeah, but did you mention 10.5? Yeah.
Yeah, I said there were two originally.
Did you go through it all, though? I didn't hear you say it, so, you have to read, you know, I think you want to read the whole thing.
Oh, no, I was going to read it when we got to 10.5.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I'm with you.
We're only at nine.
Okay, I'm with you, okay.
This is good, I need to be taken care of.
That's right.
Yeah, you know, that, I try and slip things by sometimes, and that's why, that's why Kevin's on the board, to make sure I follow the rules. Okay, now, can, all in favor? Oppose, welcome, Christopher, thank you.
In advance.
And of course, in that is the appointment, official appointment of Lucille to the district office, so, but, you already knew that. That brings us to 10.1, may I have a motion for 10.1 special education placement?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, Dan?
Did we vote on the consent agenda?
Yeah, we did, just, yeah, yeah.
Did I raise my hand?
Yeah, I think so.
You're sitting next to the non-voting person, you thought...
We have both the motion in a second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion on special debate?
I reviewed the packet and recommended its adoption as presented.
Okay, all in favor? Oppose, thank you. And congratulations to Lucille, again.
And Chris.
And Chris, yes, of course. I really feel like I've gone back to, I've gone back to bringing my kid into kindergarten, because every day, when I came in for kindergarten here, I walked by their office, I'd say hello to Lucille, I'd say hello to the principal, so it's like old, old times here. And those started in 1975, I don't think you were here in 75, but... Okay, can I have a motion for 10.2 volunteer coaches as listed in the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on those? All in favor? Oppose, thank you. Have a motion for, a motion for 10.3 that has Matt program as listed in the data within the agenda?
So moved.
I have a second? Anybody? Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose, thank you.
We need to pull the chemical hygiene program, 10.4.
Okay. Okay, that was, that was under suspicion anyway, right? Is that because of?
Someone's name is mentioned, and, yeah, it's for to be pulled, yeah.
Okay. I need a motion to pull that, may I have a motion to remove?
Yeah, so move to postpone or remove it from the agenda, whatever, make the motion.
I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose?
If I see it again.
Thank you, you'll see it to the next board meeting, probably. Oh, yeah. Now we add 10.5. I'm adding to the agenda, item 10.5, be it resolved the appointment of Barbara, how do you pronounce it?
Baracino.
Baracino, to the position of interim treasurer, shall terminate effect of the close of business on November 30th, 2015, and be it further resolved that Mrs. Baracino shall be appointed to serve as deputy treasurer effective December 1st, 2015, as part of her regular duties. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose, thank you. And that brings us to our second public participation, may I have a motion for public participation? Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose, thank you. Anybody would like to address the board? Please, step on, going once, going twice. May I have a motion to close public participation, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. That brings us to other matters, there are none that I know of, anybody have any other matters that need discussing? All right, thank you. That gives us to board subcommittee reports, is there any, were there any subcommittees? I don't believe so. The only one...
Personnel subcommittee?
Personnel, Matt, playing the treasurer, so.
Yeah. Well, they don't count as subcommittees, though. Okay, up, down to upcoming meetings. Tuesday, November 17th, 6:30 PM, DLT meeting at the administration office. Wednesday, November 18th, 7:00 PM, parent-teacher conferences at the FDR High School. Thursday, November 19th, which is a change in time, 6:30 PM, parent-teachers conferences Havland Middle School. Monday, November 23rd, half-day for elementary.
Thank you.
I'm going to insert two, Thanksgiving 20th, November 26th, my 75th birthday, and November 28th, Dan's 75th birthday.
He's older.
And Thursday, December 10th, 7:00 PM, is the next Board of Education meeting, and will be at North Park Elementary. Okay, there's no need for an additional exec session, may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much, thank you all for coming.